Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Wednesday, January 9, 2019, and Happy New Year's to everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here, thank you. In vocation, Mr. Madsen.
Good evening and welcome back. I hope everyone's having a good 2019 so far. We did have a few losses in the community, so I'd like to honor the families with a moment of silence. We lost the Pettis family and the Hill family. And I'd also like to give thoughts and prayers to our federal leadership, hoping they can come up with a compromise to end this terrible budget impasse. And thoughts and prayers for all the workers who are going without pay currently that are serving our country. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Mr. Allott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with my nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice
And for the public, for all that may not know, today is National Law Enforcement Day. So, we want to take this opportunity and thank all of our police officers in the city of Harrisburg for their service and commitment to this city. So, thank you, sir. Okay, moving on with the agenda. Courtesy of the floor, I mean, communications, we have none. And I'll move on to courtesy of the floor. Anyone to my right may come to the mic at this time. Anyone in the middle?
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
My name is Roy Chris. I live at 2931 Green Street. I'd like to talk a little bit about the first bill and how, as a community, we can work together. So, as we move forward with projects, I would like to propose to council that we look at community standards. How do we do things when we're giving something from our community away? What is it that we should look for? We've always talked, you know, for years now, we've talked about how can we talk with developers on how to have local participation? How are we going to get our young folks involved, as you know, with the trades and apprenticeship programs, pre-apprenticeship programs? How do we get minority participation and make sure that that happens on a real and measurable outcome? Also, we talked about, you know, set of sites. How are we going to get affordable housing and make sure that when a developer comes in and stuff? So, what I'm proposing is that we take moments like this to look at opportunities, how we can build relationships and how that we move forward. And using these as opportunities for all of us to work together, that we have really measurable outcomes, that we develop as a team, community standards. So, with the administration and with council, that we brainstorm and come up with these and that we make them public. So, once we have them, they're out there, they're publicized, they're in the paper, everybody gets to see them. And then, we would ask developers, "When you come to do a project, what are your community standards? And how do they relate to what we're doing?" So, I mean, I'm asking you to take a moment when we look at things like this to, "Let's develop these measurable outcomes" and to use these opportunities so that we benefit all of us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone else to my left? Thank you. Well, we're moving on to approval of minutes. Approval of the legislative session minutes of December 18, 2018. Council members, any admissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, minutes will stand approved. Moving on to override of mayoral bill 13, 2018.
Madam President, if I may.
Excuse me, wait a minute. Wait a minute, wait. Bill 13, 2018. Sir, would you like to say something?
In front of the vote, but I don't want to interfere with protocol if I'm speaking out of turn.
Have it read first, and then I'll say questions or comments. I will suspend the rules so that you can have a voice.
Much appreciated, and my apologies.
That's okay. Mr. Petrowski.
Bill 13 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg various unnamed paper streets within the block bounded by McClay Street, North 7th Street, Pfeffer Street, Mulcahy Alley pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg.
I have a motion to suspend the meeting.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, sir?
Sorry, can we get a vote on the motion?
Oh, that's right. Moving on, okay.
The motion to suspend the rules?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Yes. We really don't need a vote. We don't need a vote, but, okay. We don't need to vote. No, we don't vote.
We don't need a vote.
We don't need a vote to suspend rules, just a first and a second, but that's okay. You're the legal expert today, so I will abide by what you're saying.
Thank you.
But I've been doing this for a while. Moving on, Mr.?
Woolley.
I mean, go ahead.
I just wanted to give a little perspective on the administration's position behind the mayoral veto of Bill 13 to 18, 2018. It's really that this corridor is on the cusp of additional development. And we're thinking that a process could be in place so we can achieve some of the goals that are shared by city council and the administration. Some of those Mr. Chris just mentioned, the MBE, WBE, participation, local money staying local, and affordable housing. And maybe we should discuss how we could achieve these goals through a voluntary agreement with the developers. Just asking so we could hit the pause button for a time period, say, two months, so we can sit down and try to hash out what this type of agreement would look like and some of the goals that we share, how we could meet those goals. And we've had some projects just recently that have been before council, most notably the federal courthouse, where we had little insight into how those monies were going to be spent and the participation levels and things like that. And this presents a unique moment in time that we could do that with these projects and projects going forward. And if after that, the pause button, if after that time, no agreement had been reached, we can reintroduce this street vacation measure, and there will be no opposition from the administration.
Mark, I just want to play devil's advocate with you for that. That's not the matter that we have before us by way of this resolution. And while I agree that we need to take steps as a community to ensure that projects can include maybe participation and community involvement, you know, we have to take what we have at hand and act on it. And as a street vacation, these things were not part of that. And not opposed to the discussion, but I'm opposed to watering down legislation that's already happened with things that just are superfluous to the matter at hand. And I think that's something that, so if it's by way of process or how we've done zoning or how we put things through planning or things like that, I think we need to look at legislation that enables us to do that. But I think by tying that to this piece of legislation that's before us, I don't think that's part of our duty and our responsibility at this point in time.
I think it's a, and I appreciate that, but I also think that this is a matter, in terms of street vacation, that's solely within the province of city council. And so that, not asking you to tie any legislation to it, it's just really hitting the pause button and so we can discuss and enter, maybe enter into a voluntary agreement with developers and not tying it to.
Well?
It gives a nice opportunity to do it. And, you know, we both share the want to have some of these goals achieved, and this might be a way that we could enter the discussion with the developers to do it.
Well, let me say this to you, Mark, or Mr. Woolley, I'm sorry. Let me address you as such. You had an opportunity, as well as the administration, to be present when we had a work session. And at that work session, we had this litigation, legislation before us. No one spoke up at that time about the inclusion of MBE, WBE, nothing. You wait till the 12th hour to come before this council, and you want that to be inclusion as a part, want us to pause. Well, I disagree with you. You did have a whole lot of insight on the federal government because you were in the meetings, not you personally, but this administration. So, you did have some insight. So, that's not true. And third, how we give away things. We vacated several streets in the city of Harrisburg, and it was not inclusion of MBE, WBE, community standards, employment for our residents, nothing. Nothing was said. We had a mayor that sat in the same seat that you sit in three weeks ago, or four weeks ago, I'm sorry, when we had the GSA here. And he did not speak about minority participation, the employment for the residents here, community involvement, nothing. Kept his head down. And here again, we go with the administration asking us at the 12th hour. So, if you're going to do it for one person, I would hope that you do it for everybody else. He's also sat here with Brad Jones, who renovated about five buildings. And we asked, maybe not personally anyone up here, but I did, for a percentage of low income in some of the renovations of the apartments that he was doing in some of the buildings. He was not agreeable. And the mayor sat in the same seat you did and did not say a word. So, why at this 12th hour are you saying something about this particular project? And nothing was said about those various other entity projects.
For me, this is not about this particular project, and this will be going forward.
You're vacating an alley, two alleys. You can hardly get a bike in those alleys. And we vacated streets that you actually could get a car through, that you could have a car driven through. So, I don't see the comparison of what you're coming today and saying, community standards, how we give things away, inclusion of MBE, WBE, the community involvement of workers here in the city of Harrisburg. So, what is the real reason behind this?
For me, this is a way to achieve goals that we have said that...
But you had an opportunity to achieve goals before. You sat right here before with, I'm sorry, it's your Sean. And we talked to Charlie White, and we talked about achieving goals. Talked about doing an ordinance. That ordinance doesn't even exist yet. Why are we just now doing, I mean, why is everything pressured on this barrel veto of AutoZone about doing goals when you had an opportunity to do goals before?
And I was given a perspective of why there was a mayoral veto and the rationale behind it, in the hopes that we could enter into discussions about it.
Well, we will. We will. And I'm working personally with someone to do that. Even after this vote, I would work with someone in your administration to make sure that's an inclusion part, that we no longer give street vacates without making sure that the city profits in some way, in some manner.
And I appreciate that you're here kind of raising these points, but I find it almost suspect because it's not really been the tone that the mayor's put forth regarding this project and what he's put out in the community. And so, that's what makes that veto more suspect because that's not the information that he's been putting out there since the project came out.
Exactly.
And I think that's where I find it somewhat disingenuous to have this conversation be tied to this particular street vacation based on, you know, what the mayor's put out into the community. And I'd say that if he was sitting right here in the same matter. And I think that's what makes this a little bit suspect in my mind. And that's not to, not to discuss how important these issues are for us to discuss and pursue as a body between council and administration, but not tied to this specific project. I just don't, I do not agree with that.
Anyone else?
I'm going to be a little bit blunt, so I apologize to you because...
I'm used to it.
This is really directed at the mayor. Frankly, this is, I'm going into my sixth year, and I'm tired that they are using one of his people, a colorist book, his shield and his sword when it comes to protecting his community interests in the city. So, while I appreciate what you're saying about this, the mayor has not sent down any legislation in the six years I've been here to address affordable housing issues or to address minority business, businesses contracting and working in the city. So, his concern ruins shadow and ruins more like a shield than anything else. And this, I'm going into my sixth year. We've been talking about this for years now. We still have no legislation. And this voluntary participation, I don't even know what that means. We're supposed to just walk in as legislative bodies and executive bodies and tell people who want to do business, "Will you pretty please be nice and hire our people?" No. That doesn't even make sense. So, I really, I find this administration's position on this matter, just as you're fielding it, to be really a part of this and not anything of much substance. You know, the issue here is these street vacations. That corridor, that area is an area I have to walk every once in a while because I live just about six blocks from there. We don't really see much happening there. Frankly, I don't know what the proposal is going to look like from AutoZone. I don't know if anyone else is going to bring any proposals. But to sit there and say that we're going to, that the administration is vetoing these vacations because he cares about our residents getting jobs and women and people of color getting contracts, when he hasn't sent down any bill in the six years I've been here is just ludicrous to me. I'd like a rational reason for not overturning that veto. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels.
And additionally, yes, additionally, so this bill was in my committee and during our committee hearing, one of the discussion topics about a reason for the issue being, well, it doesn't fit into what the comprehensive plan says, or it was, we want, we have a vision for what we would like that corner to be used, which was to be mixed-use and residential, if I remember correctly. So, that was some of the rationale during that meeting. We had folks from the potential buyer and developer here, and when they were discussing that project, those were the rationales that the mayor voiced sitting where you're sitting now. And for us to come to us at this, to talk about minority participation, or, I mean, I'm not going to repeat what Councilwoman Daniels said, but a lot of her comments ring true. It's, if we want as a city to develop a policy on how we handle street vacations, let's do that. And let's incorporate all these things. But these are things that if we were having these discussions ahead of time, we could have put in place so when we know, and we do have projects coming down the line, that we may have to consider doing a street vacation. And as was just pointed out earlier, they are discretionary, but we can also try to set up some guidelines in moving forward. This, for it to come out now the way it is, I mean, I think several of my other council members have already spoken to some of the issues that we do have with how it's being, what the veto message said versus what was actually said to us in council chambers. So, can you just explain to me what the rationale was? Because I don't know if you were here for that meeting, but the mayor did say, he talked about the comprehensive plan, but we still don't have a final document. So, to try to tell us what the comprehensive plan says when it's still being developed by the Planning Commission versus the message that we received, to me, there were two things that didn't mesh up to me.
No, I appreciate that. But I also think that I had time to reflect on some of the things that we've been working on, some of the shared values that the administration and city council have. And in my discussions with the mayor, it was important that these issues, these type of issues going forward are part of the discussion. And this is one of the ways that we can address these issues. So, for me, what I'm hearing from council is hopeful in that going forward, we'll be able to have those discussions about these things in the future because these are some of the issues that were tasked to me, I think, directly by city council to address. And I look forward to being able to address them. And while the, it appears to be focused on this one transaction, for me, it's not. It's a more global view of looking at where developing, development is happening in the city and how we can be assured that there's participation and that local monies stay local and that we have, we're looking at what I know is a very important issue to council and the council president, affordable housing. So, for me, this is a, this is not going to be a one-stop. This is going to be something that I'll continue to seek council's help in developing measures to meet those goals.
But if, oh, but if we're talking about the issue of affordable housing, what does that have to do with this particular bill before us? We know, we all recognize that having, we have issues with affordable housing in the city of Harrisburg. Council President Williams, Councilwoman Daniels have been championing and working on trying to develop affordable housing matters and initiatives in the past. What, how, what is the tie to affordable housing to Bill 13?
I think that the tie is that this is something that's solely within city council's province and that we can bring developers to the table to agree to certain things. And I don't, it could be percentage of units that are affordable housing and using things such as this in order to get those, those voluntary agreements.
Do you know where that's located at?
Hold on.
On 7th Street. I'm sorry, Mr. Majors.
I do.
That's industrial. That whole area is industrial. So, where are you talking about doing affordable housing?
But that's why I'm talking about that it's not about this deal, that it's about...
No, it has to be because you're here, you're here speaking on this bill, Bill 13.
I said that it's not only about this and giving some background as to what we're hoping to do in C. But I understand.
Mr. Majors, go ahead. I'm sorry. Just a minute. Mr. Majors?
I would, go ahead, Mr. Chris.
So, with all due respect, I appreciate everyone's position, but I would like to add one, one important thing is that I've been tasked in a new role. And that role didn't happen until the budget was really passed. And I don't mean that with any disrespect to anyone. I've been very passionate, as you know, about this. We've met, you know, as we talked before about responsible contractor language, and we talked about hiring locally. And as you know, the governor has appointed me to the Training and Apprenticeship Council. And literally today, we were working on a project that includes ABC, the building, the trade unions, and the local Metropolitan Home Builders Association to start working with kids in 5th and 6th grade moving forward. So, some of this is timing, some of it's perspective of how you see it. But I wasn't really able to be in this role fully until this new year, so.
I'm still here in Kentucky, but the best councilman has been asking for affordable housing bills and for minority participation bills for several years now. So, it doesn't matter what role you were in. The fact is that the law bureau and the administration never sent down legislation to us. And frankly, like, I don't know how much effort people have been putting into pressure and lobbying or if we're setting anything down in what current conditions. But we've been having this conversation for a long time. And if the mayor currently is stating that this is what his interest is, I want to see a legislation come down within the next month or so because we've been talking about this for a long time. And until we have a bill to really work off of and see what we like and what we don't like, that conversation isn't really going to happen in any material way.
And if you're concerned about affordable housing, there is an opportunity to have affordable housing on North 6th Street. This administration didn't want it. And that was just most recently.
True.
So, it's not about affordable housing at this point. Just a minute. Sir, the Planning Commission is downstairs in the basement.
Oh, it's in the basement?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes. Okay. Maybe put a sign out there.
There's a sign.
Okay, okay, okay. So, that is, that's my...
I didn't see the sign.
No, and I appreciate that.
And that's my concern. We've been asking this administration about affordable housing. And see, I sit here and I'm really getting angry right now.
Right.
Because every time someone comes in here and develops one of these office buildings and turns it into townhouses and apartments, it's not affordable housing for anyone in the city of Harrisburg, only for those who come into the city.
And we have had those, you know.
So, we want to, where's your, where is the plan?
But can I tie it back to something again? These are all great conversation, but it has nothing to do with this bill.
Right.
Which is really, at the end of the day...
So, I want to make sure.
Right, I know. And I'm saying, but that's what, I think, my frustration, great, this is a great conversation, but this whole veto of this bill has nothing to do with these things.
Okay, so we'll move on. We'll move on.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
But I make a promise and a commitment to you that we will work together on this.
Yes. I have some things in place.
Yeah. And please, and not just the members of council, but let's also have a work session meeting or let's set aside a whole meeting. I'm sure Councilwoman Bowers would be more than willing to have a meeting to discuss affordable housing in the city of Harrisburg. But this is Bill 13, 2018, having to do with a street vacation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Woolley.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on.
Motion to go back in.
Motion to go back in the session.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Petrowski, please call the vote.
No, we have to make a motion to do it.
Oh, that's right, we have a motion.
I'll make it. I move to make a motion that council resolves to override the mayoral veto of Bill 13 of 2018 and ordain into law Bill 13 of 2018 as adopted at the legislative session of December 18th and 2018.
Thank you. Okay.
And if this is going to move forward to a vote, so a vote of yes will affirm the veto, correct? Okay.
Override the veto.
Yes is for override, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure so we all know what we're saying.
A yes is for your motion.
Motion to override.
To override, correct.
Yes, wanted to make sure.
Okay. So, it's affirmed by our legal counsel. Please go have a vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
City council overrides the mayoral veto of Bill 13 of 2018.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Next, moving on to reports to committees, we have none, ordinance for first meeting, none, ordinance for amendment, none, and ordinance, ordinance for final passage, none. Moving on to Resolution 1 of 2019.
Did you want to do the please one first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We will not move on to Resolution 1. We're going to move on to the end of our agenda and go to Resolution 7, 2019. May I have a motion to suspend the rules again, please?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
We have a vote, please? Call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. Yes. Tiffany?
Are you, you're doing the...
We're doing Resolution 7. Yes. The Cody Computer Services.
I see Eric, do you want to come up too? I can discuss briefly the terms, sort of in conditions. This is a four-year contract. There's an upfront payment of $230,000. That's for the first year. That includes the licensed software. It includes maintenance and support for the year. It includes data conversion and data migration of the metro database into this new software. And then, the remaining three years of the contract are purely for maintenance and support, and that's roughly $40,000 a year. And obviously, that's subject to city council appropriation every year.
Yeah, and that's, the annual cost is the exact same for our current RMS system as well. The funds are just to initially do the migration and purchase the actual application and the infrastructure that goes with it. Years 2, 3, and 4 are the exact same cost as our current application.
And so, this is time-sensitive?
It is. The vendor is offering a substantial discount if we get this signed and the upfront payment, I believe, by February, early February, they will still honor the...
The upfront payment is what?
$230,000.
And that's what we budgeted for, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. I believe the police have budgeted about $250,000.
Okay. Is it a reason why this was budgeted for and everything looked a discount in mind, but it took so long for it to get down to us?
So originally, the law bureau was handed the proposal in November. Then it was strictly just the proposal. When we looked at it, we realized there were no terms and conditions actually attached to it. When we received the terms and conditions, it was December 21st. So in law bureau world, it's pretty fast.
Okay. Is it a reason why we hadn't realized, why didn't we push for it to happen sooner? From what I understand, we had to get an extension on the savings period...
The discount.
In order to, and then have to hurry up and get it down in order for us to make the savings? Is there a reason why we weren't on that a little sooner to make sure that we weren't in this push for time?
Like I said, we received the proposal. We were told to review it. It wasn't realized until, like I said, mid-December that we didn't actually have all the terms and conditions. And by the time we got that, it's just December 21st, we're still in budget season. It just took a little bit of time to get everything together.
So my questions for this moment.
Do you not log in the legislation as it comes down?
Yes.
Comes into your...
Yes, absolutely.
So this is dated November the 13th?
Yes.
And you did not move forward until December 21st?
No, no, no. That's when we actually received the actual terms and conditions from the vendor.
Okay. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, so the terms are in the resolution. Is that a...
No, they are. Yes, so are you speaking to the pricing?
Yeah.
So that's that confidential proposal that you have? That's what the city would be executing? And the way that their proposal is structured, it breaks down every software component, and that's proprietary, obviously. The software company does not want everyone to know what the discount is that we're getting.
Any other questions, council members?
To the police department, Cody would replace NSYNC, correct?
That is correct. Not only would it replace it, it would absorb Metro.
Okay. And what benefit does this bring to the city? Could you just explain why we need this a little more?
Absolutely. Thank you, number one, for the opportunity to talk. The biggest piece for us as we move through this process of our RMS changes, it started, number one, with the problems that we have with our current RMS provider. The problems just seem to expand and get bigger as we try to correct problems with that provider. If I can bring your recollection back, when we initially moved to this RMS provider back in 2015, I think, was our timeframe when we moved. It was more sort of a need to move because our current system with Metro had, was on its last legs. And due to constraints of the city and staffing, we're no longer able to provide an RMS solution to us. Metro ended up crashing as we converted over. So our initial move was timed. However, that was the incentive that was given to us with the help of the county to move to that countywide system, bringing us, we were one of the last departments to come in and tie the whole county in with a one RMS system. The current system is not able to meet our needs. Us being the largest contributor in there caused us to immediately see some issues in there that were not projected to us. What we started to see with our current provider is a lag in time with times for actual reports to get completed by officers up into two, three, four hours to complete a report, something that is completely unacceptable from a standpoint of operations. With this new move and we demoed out the product that they provided, our biggest push for that is the commitment to, or correction, our correction in our ability to take some time back and give officers more time back on the street to do more work like patrolling, being in response time to calls. If you can just imagine the amount of time that it would take to have an officer sitting at a computer terminal inside of a police station or behind a car, that takes away from other duties that the officers would be available to do. So that's our big drive, is to give us some time, obviously with the current configuration and the problems that we're assisting, that we're having with the current NSYNC system. We have a morale issue. We have officers that are affecting their morale because of the amount of time that they have to spend to do sometimes very simple tasks. Again, this fixes all of the problems with this move and, again, boosts the morale of the officers. And at the end of the day, gets them back out on the street much quicker.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Any additional questions, council members? Motion to go back into session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Petrowski, please read it in.
Seven?
Resolution seven of 2019 was moved by Ms. Green, second by Mr. Mattson.
It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a licensed software and vendor services agreement with Cody Computer Services Incorporated for Record Management Services for the city of Harrisburg, Bureau of Police.
Any additional questions or comments, council members?
I would encourage my colleagues to vote in support of this, especially since it's time sensitive. This is something that our police department needs in order to be successful and continue to serve the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Any other additional comments or questions? Hearing done. Police call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution seven passes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to, back to the front of the agenda. Resolution 1, 2019. Please read it into record, Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution 1 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution pointing Zachary R. Monier to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
That will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to Resolution 2.
Resolution 2 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution confirming the reappointment of Ms. Gretchen M. Little to serve on the Harrisburg Human Relations Commission for a one-year term.
That also will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to Resolution 3.
Resolution 3 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Kevin E. Burrow to serve on the Harrisburg Human Relation Commission for a one-year term.
That also will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to Resolution 4.
Resolution 4 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allott, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Mayor Russell, certified public accountants to audit the city of Harrisburg's annual audit and financial report, DCED, CLGS, for the year ending December 31st, 2018.
That will be placed in budget and finance committee. Moving on to Resolution 5.
Resolution 5 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Mattson, second by Ms. Green. It's a resolution to correct ordinance for 2018 appropriating community development block grant funds, CDBG funds, for the fiscal year 2018 by inserting a line item under housing and community development activities for emergency demolition expenses in the amount of $120,000, which amount is currently totaled, included in the total CDBG funds amount of $2,43,831 for fiscal year 2018.
That will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Resolution... Oh, we're done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Resolution 6 of 2019 was removed, and we've already done Resolution 7. At this time, council members, any oh business?
Yes. Gretchen Little is here. She was able to rearrange her schedule, and she just wanted to know if you logged in any questions for her reappointment.
Actually, that goes into committee, I'm sorry. And that will be probably in the next two weeks, which is January 22nd. Okay? Could you come back at that time?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Unless, council members, you have a problem with now doing an interview or since she's here?
She has a reappointment, right?
She has a reappointment to the Harrisburg Human Relations Commission. Hello?
Yeah, I don't know.
Any questions or concerns about speaking to her now?
No.
Okay. Okay. But since you're here, we won't make you come back, Ms. Little. Come on up then, before we go to oh business. Yeah, I am. I am. I am. Before you speak, I need a motion to suspend the ruse.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Voting on it.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson? Yes. Mr. Majors? Yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 7 passes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to, back to the front of the agenda. Resolution 1, 2019. Please read it into record, Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution 1 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution pointing Zachary R. Monier to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
That will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to Resolution 2.
Resolution 2 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution confirming the reappointment of Ms. Gretchen M. Little to serve on the Harrisburg Human Relations Commission for a one-year term.
That also will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to Resolution 3.
Resolution 3 of 2019 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Kevin E. Burrow to serve on the Harrisburg Human Relation Commission for a one-year term.
That also will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to Resolution 4.
Resolution 4 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Allott, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Mayor Russell, certified public accountants to audit the city of Harrisburg's annual audit and financial report, DCED, CLGS, for the year ending December 31st, 2018.
That will be placed in budget and finance committee. Moving on to Resolution 5.
Resolution 5 of 2019 was moved by Mr. Mattson, second by Ms. Green. It's a resolution to correct ordinance for 2018 appropriating community development block grant funds, CDBG funds, for the fiscal year 2018 by inserting a line item under housing and community development activities for emergency demolition expenses in the amount of $120,000, which amount is currently totaled, included in the total CDBG funds amount of $2,43,831 for fiscal year 2018.
That will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Resolution... Oh, we're done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Resolution 6 of 2019 was removed, and we've already done Resolution 7. At this time, council members, any oh business?
Yes. Gretchen Little is here. She was able to rearrange her schedule, and she just wanted to know if you logged in any questions for her reappointment.
Actually, that goes into committee, I'm sorry. And that will be probably in the next two weeks, which is January 22nd. Okay? Could you come back at that time?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Unless, council members, you have a problem with now doing an interview or since she's here?
She has a reappointment, right?
She has a reappointment to the Harrisburg Human Relations Commission.
Yeah, I don't know.
Any questions or concerns about speaking to her now?
No.
Okay. Okay. But since you're here, we won't make you come back, Ms. Little. Come on up then, before we go to oh business. Yeah, I am. I am. I am. Before you speak, I need a motion to suspend the ruse.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Voting on it.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson? Yes. Mr. Majors? Yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 7 passes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Make a motion to go back into session?
So moved.
Have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Council members, are there any oh business that we have to attend to?
Yes, I just kind of wanted to remind folks that the applications for your commission and the deadline is extended January 31st. So if anyone knows any specific address or school district, just likely share with them and have them submit them. And if they're, if they think they don't have all of the requirements, just reach out to the city clerk, just to help them figure it out in time.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Anything else? Moving on to new business? Any new business, council members?
Yes, I would like to announce that tomorrow will be the police wear-in ceremony at 10:00 a.m. at the state museum auditorium. So if anyone's free and able to make it, I encourage everyone to go and support the new officer, thanks for an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Anything else, council members? I just want to let the public know that there will be no meetings next week. The next work session will be January 22nd, 2019, at 5:30 p.m. here in council chambers. Seeing nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.